All right, welcome everyone to our July 14, 2020 Village Board meeting. This will be streamed live again as it has in the past. I'd just like to have Trustee Lewis lead off with a little bit of instructions so everybody understands what we'd like to do at every meeting.
Okay, so today's meeting is being broadcast on Facebook Live. For all to see, you may type in comments if you wish, but we are not responding to comments live on the screen unless we're not responding to comments. There is a bit of a delay sometimes between what we do here and what you appear on the screen. It should not be, hopefully, too distracting. And if there are any problems, you can just type in on the Facebook comments if there's an audio problem or a video problem, and I will do my best to fix it immediately.
All right, I'd like to lead off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, unafraid, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are scheduled to start with a brief presentation by Linda Vincent, who had emailed us and wanted to do an awareness presentation on all the municipal buildings throughout the county, and that was to light them up in purple. I don't know the details of what she wanted to do and how she wanted to do it, and I thought it would be best if she came here and explained to us how she wanted to conduct that. So fortunately, Linda has not made it. So if she does show up later with a board approval, we'll include her in. If not, we'll try to handle this offline, all right? So then let's jump right into the schedule. Next is, I want to put up front, is Village, the Village Parks, and we've had an ongoing issue, and Trustee Lewis will take care of that.
Okay. It came, it came to the attention of the Village Board that the work done for the ADA compliant paths at Crystal Lake was not done properly. So basically, we had our village engineer, Ty and Bond, went up, took a look, they gave us their evaluation, and they said, yes, indeed, the work is out of spec. So we asked Ty and Bond to drop the proper specifications for what the work needed to be done, and we also asked them to go out and solicit bids for the work to be done. And the reason why we're having, this is having somebody go out and do it, this is a bit of specialty work to get the proper consistency for the materials that you pack into the pathways so that you have the proper consistency and that they are indeed wheelchair and otherwise acceptable, accessible. So Ty and Bond did so, dropped their specifications, they actually solicited eight different firms. They only received a response from one, and after checking with the village attorney, we found that as long as we've made a good faith effort to solicit the bids, and however, nobody else has chosen to respond, and we only have one bid, we can go ahead and accept that bid. So that's the status. I would assume they will get started as soon as they can. I can look up the bid if you want. So the bid would be awarded to Van Etnen Contracting for a total of $9,920 to do the remediation work. So obviously, this work was supposed to be done to specifications, and it was not initially. So it leads to questions, are we, can we recover our costs for this? So I spoke to our village attorney, Rich Olson, and basically said, in order to recover damages, you must have damages. So the first thing we're going to do is get the work done, and then when we have the final bill, we are going to then evaluate if we can go and either look at our old engineering firm or our old contractor to see if we can recover the costs of doing this remedial work. And whether we do that depends upon how much work and how much the legal bills would be, and we'll take it from there. But first, we have to do the repairs, get a bill, and then make a decision.
So Rick, I have a question. So how long ago was?
Paul, let's make a motion first and then go into discussion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the second.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted a little bit of extra background. So when was the original work done?
The original work done is now over a year ago. So it's been a while, and it came to, basically, it came to our attention when we had time to uncut and take a look. So it's been a while, and there's no, and we had both Ty and Bond and Rich look at the paperwork. Is there warranty? Is there grace period? But we didn't decide when we'd get too deep into it until we found out what the final bill would be, rather than spending their money.
But there was some sort of?
There was a sign-off, that the work was, there was a sign-off, that the work was done to specifications.
Right.
And it clearly wasn't.
Okay.
So there is an issue, there is an issue there.
Yeah, all right. Okay.
Do you recall the grant structure? We got a grant on that. Do you recall the grant structure?
It was a, yeah, it was a community development block grant.
Was it like 50/50, or was it?
I think it was 400,000.
No, no. It was under 100.
It was about 90-something.
It was 90-something, that's right. And I have Ann Saylor, Ann Saylor, who is the person that the county contacts for this, is aware that we've had this problem, and she's been asking us to keep her updated on what we're doing to bring it up to date, but she hasn't had anything else to contribute besides that.
But it was definitely a CDBG grant.
Yeah, it was a CDBG grant.
And specific for ADA accessibility?
Yes. And it was supposed to be?
It was an ADA grant.
It was an ADA grant. It was a grant to bring Crystal Lake to create better ADA accessibility.
Okay. Paul, we did discuss this, it's in the public record, I surfaced this as an issue, and we discussed it.
I can't understand, I'm sorry.
I surfaced this as an issue last year, and we did discuss it at the June 2019 meeting. It's in the public record, and we did discuss it in July 2019 as well.
Yeah, I seem to remember it. I'm just refreshing my memory, John. So I just had one other question. So in the assessment by Ty and Bond, is there, let's say, room for interpretation of the ADA requirements that basically would somehow mitigate their lack of performance in some way, shape, or form? Or any rule changes, for example?
No, there have been no changes in the ADA regulations as far as it would pertain to the path, but two issues that are out of compliance are that cross slope across the path needs to be less than 2%, and it exceeds 2% in some places, and it needs to be a stable non-slip surface, and if you've been down there, you realize it's a very granular surface.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, so one of our questions would be whether the proper, there was a specification for a kind of stone dust that was to be used, and the question was whether that was actually, you know, that's actually the right stuff that was put down, if it was compacted properly.
All right, nice, okay, thank you.
So question, since we're doing this and the engineering didn't follow through last time, will you be the inspector, Ty and Bond's here, will you be the inspector to make sure that it is done correctly for us?
Yes, we've talked to Mr. Benton about being present when the work is actually being performed, and it looks like to us, one of the principal things that was left out when the stone dust was applied the first time is a binding agent that gives it some achesion and allows it to be compacted into a smooth, non-stick surface. So that has been added into the corrective action plan that we put together.
And you'll, but you'll expect him to sign off on it for us?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the funding, the $9,920, does that include your fee or not?
No, $9,920 is the date from the contract.
Right. All right, so do we have an estimate of your fee?
I believe I told John that it was going to be $3,500 for our fee.
All right, so the total is?
About $12,000.
$12,000, okay. So then my next question is the funding for this, right? And since our treasurer is here, I know we have a parks line item that we have $40-some-thousand into it. Is that the line item we would use for this?
Forty, yeah. But what you can do, if you want to?
You might want to get a little bit closer to the mic or pull the mic closer to you. Karen, please.
If you like to operate contingency, if you moved into that park's line item to cover this job, then you'll know that it's been completed and it gives us a spot to go to when we go to recoup the funds, if we are able to do that. And then I guess my other question is, do you want the engineering to come out of that same line item to keep it all together as the same job so we can track the cost, as opposed to?
Engineering services.
Trudging the engineering, the engineering line?
We created the engineering services line to keep track of our engineering costs as well.
Right, is this a particular, this is more a particular, right, I understand, I'm asking, this is where it might be a particular job, so I didn't know if you wanted to keep it all together.
So I had one other sort of question, I guess it's more about strategy or how you might approach this. So one way might be to approach the original contractor and say, look, this is out of spec, you know, we'd like it fixed, will you do it? Rather than us expending the funds on our own and going through all of that and then trying to recover them, you know, would there be a possibility that the contractor would acknowledge the mistake, given this assessment by Ty and Bond, and basically to avoid some sort of litigation, make the correction?
Well, it was, we determined, when we took a look at all the contracts, it was unclear, and Rich didn't really get into it, who would really be the responsible party at this point, where the finger pointing was going to lead. And so we decided, for public accessibility, we'd get the job done and then turn around and see if we could get something done, because, yeah, it's a little bit unclear who or what.
And who wrote the contract?
Who wrote the contract?
Yeah.
I believe that Crawford and Associates wrote the original contract and put together the original specs.
And did Rich Olson have a chance to review that contract?
He did, and he reviewed the, initially he re-did it, and then he also reviewed it recently when I brought him all the documents and all the bid documents. But again, there's enough ambiguity, enough different places, that we decided, he said that, go ahead, do the work.
And I hear that, and, and.
Excuse me, can I interrupt a second? Martina, sorry, I received a phone call, and I'm wondering if it's Linda at the door. So like, sorry, Paul.
That's all right, I just. We've got to take care of the, you think?
So, yeah, so the question was, yes, we could, we could chase that around, but in desire to get it usable and back in the spec as quickly as possible, rather than letting it sit there.
I guess what bothers me the most is that, you know, the contract was reviewed by our attorney, and for it to have some ambiguity in it, in terms of interpretation on a, I think, rather straightforward matter, is troubling. You know, it should be a slam dunk, you didn't do it, and we're going to litigate, and it shouldn't be something that's, oh, it's a little ambiguous as to who's culpable here. That's not an acceptable.
I think, I think that one of the reasons why we changed engineering firms was because we felt like Ty and Bond was more, but they were not, because they were more pro.
I get that.
I'm making sure these details.
But there was a, you know, bipartisan thing here. The contract, you know, our attorney reviewed it and said it was okay, and, you know, that's disturbing, that shouldn't have happened.
But if it were, if the spec were written improperly, then?
Well, but then someone flagged it. And, you know, the attorney is looking at it again, basically saying, there's ambiguity here, you know, that's not, that's not acceptable, really, I'm sorry.
Randy's got a comment, I think.
I was just going to suggest, if you are considering legal action, you may not want to discuss it at this point.
No, no, of course.
It may be something you want to save for executive session.
But I think Paul's point was, should we go back on the contractors and request?
I can only offer in our assessment that there was ambiguity because of the lack of completeness of the documents that were available to us to review as to when certain submittals were made and whether or not they were authorized. So just judging from what was available in the villages files, and it would not be uncommon that you don't have every single submittal and the authorization, you may need to go through a legal discovery process to really be able to piece together what transpired.
Okay, that's, that's not comforting either. Okay.
This project, I inherited, I inherited.
No, no, I'm not, I'm just.
But I think, but I think the point well taken, in that these are procedures that have to be tighter.
Yeah.
I'm pointing.
That's the point.
Pointed.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I'm just saying, Mr. Mayor, that I think it is right that we have a conversation about recovery or not in executive session.
You know, I just, without getting too far in it, but in talking to Rich's question is, we have to see what the damages are.
Yes.
And then what's the cost of recovery?
We need to fix it first.
Yeah, that's, that's a priority.
And that was, and that was, that was his advice.
Yes, agree, fixing is the priority.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second time for vote. All in favor of spending the $9,920? I'm going to back up, because the issue is contingency fund or park?
Right.
Right? Does anyone want to amend the motion on that? I'm going to make a motion that we use the park fund money, because that's what park fund money is for, to do this rather than the contingency fund.
Oh, you mean the capital?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Listen, I thought you were talking about operating budget.
No, the capital fund for parks.
Okay, so capital parks.
Right. Okay, so then a motion has been amended to charge this and the engineering fees to the Capital Parks Fund project?
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, staying, so Karen?
And just for the audience, you just mentioned there were no opposing votes, because it's a little hard to hear us all, and, you know, Karen and Anna.
All right, so there was no, everybody was in favor of being, okay. I don't know what happened to Martina.
I hope she's not stuck outside.
Our village clerk is not.
She forgot the code.
Well, the code may not work.
Yeah, that's the problem.
But let's get started with the treasures report.
Ah, she made it. Ah, good.
Oh, there she is. All right, so let's, we're going to take a segue here.
Take it here.
Hi, Linda, how are you?
I'm good.
All right, we kind of jumped ahead, so if you're comfortable and ready, if you would like to just, you can do it right from where you're at, just speak loud enough so the microphone can pick you up. I did introduce your subject, this is Linda, this is Linda Vincent, who would like to, throughout the county, on municipal buildings, for the month of August, I believe, is to adorn all the buildings in purple lights for international overdose awareness, right, and the opioid crisis, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to you, Linda, so that we can, you can give us a brief outline of what you would like.
Is it okay to talk like this?
Yes, as long as the social distancing is maintained.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for giving me this time. I wrote to you, and I wrote to Elizabeth, she did say that I can put lights on the town, that building, I guess that's the town.
That's the town, that's the town.
And the purpose is, when I did research to find out how New York was going to observe this day, generally, they do if they can, right now because of COVID, there's a group up outside of Lynn Falls called Empire Purple, and they recommended that a lot of village government buildings light up purple to recognize international overdose drug awareness day. And so I heard that, and they said, take pictures of it and post it. And so when I heard that, I thought, well, I have some funds, I could donate the money to give the lights, and I started here in Rhinebeck. Excuse me. So I have the lights, I have a committee, I just need to know where to plug in, and we're hoping to have the whole month of August with the lights on. The actual day is August 31st. My dream is that, and I did write to the mayor of Red Hook once I heard from Elizabeth, and he's actually volunteered an electrician to help with gels, and I believe that's what they put, these spotlights, so it just puts a purple light on the building. And I'm hoping to go, I park, keep seeing Hudson, and I know that last year Governor Cuomo turned on purple lights for this day, and just recently in October, they use purple lights for domestic violence. So, and they lit up the Capitol, the Twin Towers, the Bridge, and the Anheuser-Schaefer State. And my hope is that we could light up Rhinebeck, and that we could have a press briefing with, you know, however you do that, and I used to do PR, I'm happy to write a press release, and work with anybody in town to, so that's, that's basically it.
Questions for Linda?
Linda, you said that your goal, your goal was to light the building up for 30 days for the entire month of August. Does that take away the impact of the day that, I think you said it was the 30th?
The 31st.
The 31st?
Well, I don't, I don't believe so. And if you feel that way, I'm certain, you know, I will work with you in any way that you want to. I think it gives us time to promote it and talk about it, and people, you know, maybe you don't come to town on August 31st, but you're here on the 11th, and it raises consciousness and curiosity, and as long as it doesn't get in the way of anything else that you're trying to do in August.
Are the municipalities doing it for the full 30 days, the 31 days?
Well, you're the first municipality that I've approached. I did write to the mayor of Red Hook, Ed Bondella, I believe is his name, and he wrote, it was very interested, and said he had a friend who's an electrician, and the electrician already has written to me, so that's, that's all I know.
Okay, no, thank you. I did, I did speak to the town supervisor, because they had this on your agenda for last night, and they, and they approved it.
Yes, they did.
So the town of Rhinebeck has already approved doing this.
For the 30 days?
Yes, for the 30 days. Linda, so the question when you and I spoke, it was about how to adorn the building?
Yes.
Right? So I know you're, now we're, because of the size of this building, you're looking at spotlights, and you, you have the spotlights to use, correct?
I do not, that I can get them, but I just checked your lights here, you've got a spotlight on the side, you've got another one over there on that building, and, but I have lights that could be put on your shrubs and bushes.
Okay.
Because, and, but I also have a handyman that did come with a ladder and put lights, you know, not all the way up here, but on the lower level.
Okay, because we would have to work with the fire company to do something lower?
Yes.
For impact to there, if you want to do something lower?
Yes.
If that would work out. And the flag light, we don't want to alter, that's a, already a white LED light that?
Got it.
Can't change, okay?
But when I spoke to Elizabeth, she indicated that I might want to work with one of the maintenance people here, and I'm not sure who that is, I was told to work with the clerk over there.
So let's see if the board would like to proceed, and then we can figure out, then we can meet later and work out the details, how's that?
Sure, okay.
I just had a couple of more questions, if that's all right. Thank you for coming and for putting this before the board. I think it's a great idea. I just wanted to get a little bit more particulars. So have you done this before?
No, I have not.
Okay.
My son died last August of an accidental overdose, and it's my day. This day started in 2001 in Australia, I was working for the Salvation Army.
I see.
And I don't know if you, I put out my proposal to Gary and to Elizabeth, and since then, it's now taken over in 2012 by a big agency of Australia, and it's come to this country. And just in terms of the numbers, in 2018, there were 60, over 60,000 overdoses in this country, 2017, there were over 70,000. This year, a woman named Marvel Walk was on the Chris Cuomo Show, and she cited that it is an absolute runaway.
Yeah, I agree completely, and I want to commend your dedication to this.
I didn't notice one of those numbers.
No, no, I follow.
I've done special events, I've done all kinds of things.
No, no, just, you know, out of curiosity.
Sure.
But I appreciate that you're, you know, taking that initiative. And so we have some flexibility in terms of, you know, what sort of lighting is available, is what you're saying. And you would provide that?
Yes.
All of that, okay.
And if you have this labor, I have $1,200.
Okay.
So that's what I, and people have been sending me money, so.
Yeah, sure, no, that's great. Is there a plan, you know, just how many, what the, what the lighting period at, at night, I presume, would be? What is, what are you envisioning? Like, would the lights go on at 8 o'clock?
Sure, at dark.
Yeah, at dark, or, you know, but, I mean, when would they go off?
Whenever you tell me.
Okay, all right. My only, my only question about that is, you know, whether or not the light would somehow, because, you know, it's the village, whether the light might, you know, cause some concern by folks, you know, the light may be keeping them awake or bothering them, or something like that. I think we have to be a little sensitive.
If they're purple lights.
Yeah, it shouldn't be too bad, but you never know.
That's right, you don't.
Okay.
I think it's a wonderful idea. I would love to see some sort of signage in the village hall or on our door that explained why these lights are here, so that people can link, people notice that there's something different going on, and so they can actually just look up and say, these are here.
I've asked about that too, and I have a graphic down with spread, and we've done signs, staples.
Oh, great.
So once I get the going head, I'd be happy to get approval on the copy for the sign.
So you think you'd be ready to go by August 1st?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
I have lights.
Okay. No, no. Any other questions?
I would think that this would be the only building that would probably be a fit for this. There was a bunch of parcels, and some of them were retention ponds and, in the, on the agenda. There's village parcels that were on the agenda? Is this a different?
This is a totally different.
Oh, okay.
You're on a, I'm sorry, Grant, you're on a different wavelength here.
Well, I thought that's.
Yeah. This is the only building that would be considered?
Yeah.
In a village, only the municipal hall, to answer your question. Okay, so, Linda, I too think this is a wonderful, wonderful thing to do, and I would like to make a motion that we accept your offer to light our municipal building for the month of August, with details that we can work out and then share with the board in terms of how we will do that lighting, and I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with this.
I second that strongly.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm actually opposed, Linda, I'm not opposed to it, this is a great cause, but it just strikes me that 31 days, the entire month, to me, that might just be a bit excessive, that might be a bit too much. And I'm always concerned about setting a precedent, and that perhaps the village then has to accommodate other equally good causes, Linda, that want a month as well. So that's, I want to make sure that the lights are subdued, which has already been expressed by some of the trustees and by the board, but I just, for me, I'd be more comfortable, gentlemen, if it was a week.
All right, all right, any extensions?
I could go either way with that, I'm just, so.
Well, you had a vote. You had it amended.
I already did.
Yeah, you did, all right, okay. All right, so the vote is approved. Linda, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
And please get in touch with us, and we'll set you up the right people to work out the details, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Say hello.
Okay, back to our schedule. Karen, treasures report.
Okay, treasures report for the month ending June 30th, the past month, the schedule ended with $1,234,000, and that is 77% collected on our village taxes, so we're doing very well. The general fund ended the month with $56,963.63. The water fund ended the month with $402,587.0. And the sewer fund ended the month with $551,531.84. Vouchers presented for payment, including a few that were charged to the prior year. In the general fund, total $70,976.77. In the water fund, they totaled $35,371.89. In the sewer fund, they totaled $21,537.50. For the water main project, they totaled $222,245.85. And for the highway capital project portion of. And for the highway capital project portion of that van, they total $210,550. There's one escrow payment to be made in the amount of $5,297.56. An operating statement has been provided with the revenue expenditures through the water tank this evening. The water and wastewater filling and adjustments have been reviewed and signed up by the water and wastewater department liaison and are presented for authorization.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the water adjustments as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So carry.
I would like to make a motion to accept the wastewater financials presented by our charter this evening.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So carry.
Okay, and there are no budget amendments this month, but I don't have those ready for next month.
Thank you, Karen. All right, police, we do not have a court, court has not been held. I'll give a summary of the police report. Total incidents in the town, 29. Total number of tickets in the village, 121. Total number of tickets in the town, 11. Total number of tickets in the village, 61. Arrests were zero, accidents were one. There was a lot of additional police support offered this, in the past month, working with the different organizations that were in the village, and also with the high school graduation effort. So there was some overtime occurred by our police department to support those. Okay?
And that went well, too. The high school graduation was really, really nice.
Yes. Building planning and zoning.
Okay, the June monthly fees report for 2020, June 2020. Lots of activity this month, 29 actions, 19 building department actions, and 10 planning board fees and approvals. Grand total received of $4,753.60.
Do you want to just continue on with the graduate update?
So, I think the board basically is aware that trustee Nunaker and I were asked to follow up with the town with regard to the most recent application and presentation by Grassmere concerning the Grassmere project. And as part of that, we reached out to the town planning board and received from them about 12 pages of comments about the recent presentation and submission by the Grassmere folks. Those comments pointed out a number of issues and concerns about the planning board. Trustee Nunaker and I both reviewed those and compiled some comments, which we referred back to the planning board members. We actually had a conference call with three of the planning board members, Mr. Trimble, Melody, and I'm sorry, I don't have her.
Jim Levy?
Yeah, and Jim Levy. Jim is actually the planning professional there. And we went over various issues. The outcome of the meeting was that, in fact, we did submit our comments, our joint comments, trustee Nunaker and I, and followed up with a letter. I think it'd be worthwhile if I just read a paragraph or so from that letter. Attached as a follow-up to our meeting, please find our comments on the issues and questions that the town planning board has drafted. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. We have already alerted Ty and Vaughn to expect outreach from the town's engineer on the Grassmere project in order to review collaboratively Grassmere's current plans and town and village respective assessments of their impact. At the next village board meeting, which is this one, excuse me, we will report on our video conference meeting noting that, at this point, the following status of our mutual understanding is, the most recent Grassmere project plan submitted to the town planning board is substantially different from the prior plan submissions. Number two, the current Grassmere application to the town planning board is considered incomplete by the town planning board. The town planning board, number three, will submit a request for additional information to Grassmere, which will incorporate comments from the village. And finally, number four, the town and village will continue communicating and collaborating on the Grassmere project in a manner that recognizes the villagers' role as an involved agency under secret rules. The letter was actually sent out under my signature with copies to trustee Nunaker, to the mayor, to Melody Moore, I noticed that now, and to Mr. Levy. And it was sent actually to the planning board chair, Mr. Mike Trimble. So, I think the next step that was, I believe, mentioned by the town planning board, that they would spend time with discussions or in discussions with the Grassmere folks, and that the timeline, expected timeline, might be, you know, several weeks, if not months, before all of the issues would be somehow brought to the fore and resolved. My suggestion is that we continue following this very carefully. The town planning board was, again, very cooperative and helpful, and I, I think it's a good sign that we're actually collaborating on this very important issue. So I'd like us to continue to do that. I would anticipate at some point that as we get more information, I would suggest to the board that we have some sort of working session with the public to present findings and hear people's comments. But it's a little too soon, I think, to schedule that. We haven't heard back from the town planning board. Brandon, I haven't heard anything.
No.
Okay. I was going to follow up this week, actually, after this meeting, to see, you know, just where they are, if they've heard anything further. Thank you.
Brandon, anything to add?
The only thing I would add is, at some point, we may want to add, have our planning board weigh in on.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, very good point.
There is a provision in our zoning code where we can actually refer and issue the planning board for, for, you know, advice.
Okay. Was there any discussion about the water supply in this?
The question about the water supply was, what are the assumptions being made as far as they're going to have, what I understand, is this is going to be a straight hotel kind of situ, hotel motel kind of situation, that's not the proper word, but, or is there going to be, what kind of impact the membership portion of the development's going to have? So, basically, the assumptions we are making is the 70,000 gallons a day, which is sort of like, probably way more than they need, except for fire suppression stuff. So, not a lot of discussion about the water supply, but.
But that's still considered, since engineering is here too, that's still considered to be an adequate number, based on what we know so far?
I haven't seen the specifics of the proposal as far as population, but Brandon makes a point that, you know, once the applicant firms up what the scope of their project is, then the number needs to be looked at again. I suspect, like, Brandon, that it would be less, but I think that needs to be looked at.
I think the key point was that there really weren't enough specifics, which the town planning board really pointed out very graphically, quite frankly. And so, there's a little bit of question, need to pin that down. And I think the town planning board also volunteered that their engineer would coordinate with you, that was the reference to Ty and Vaughn, so that we're all talking about the same numbers and the same basic understanding, which I think was.
And they seem to be, so far, they were on the same page.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, just to verify.
But that could evolve. As far as fire suppression, I mean, there will be an impact on the local users, just like there is in other situations where we're flushing hydrants or if there's a fire. That's going to be a business decision we have to make, you know?
Yeah.
So I'm comfortable with it, but.
Okay.
That's just me.
Yeah. My only, the only reason I asked the question was, if those numbers changed, do we have to go back through and do what, Grant, what you've already done, to work through the details of how we're going to supply the water and with?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Yeah, it's to be determined.
Yeah, it's right.
The analysis that has been done so far is fairly conservative. And so, as long as the development proposal is less, then, you know, the agreement that you've outlined so far is probably adequate, but I don't think you should finalize it until you have the particulars of the new proposal.
The other thing I want to point out is that the six-inch water main that we were proposing for the upgrade may be considered inadequate, so we really probably should have eight-inch water mains.
We did modify the agreement to say, subject to health department approval.
Right.
Health department has also said they may want to see the main, and just accommodations.
We should probably put it in the agreement, if that's what we really want.
And it's nominally more expensive, it's probably.
Right, once you're doing all the other part of it. That's what we did on the side street, so we should probably go with eight-inch.
For a while, I know that there were, the developer was pushing hard to get some approvals by this fall, and it's like, that timetable is now out the window, so where do we stand? Where do we stand? Where do we pull on it? Any sense for that?
Well, you know, the planning board, I should say, the folks attending the meeting estimated that it would take some time. I don't want to put a number on it. Okay. But it could well be that, you know, the additional documentation is there, and it's just a matter of, you know, handing it over. We don't, we don't know at this point. I believe the planning board sent out their list with our comments right, just right after the 4th of July, that Monday. So, it's a week later, you know, just check in to see if there was any reaction, you know, any plans into terms of next meeting and stuff like that. But it was really a very substantial list. I mean, it was single-spaced, 12 pages.
Oh, boy. Okay. Thank you, Paul, for the update. All right, moving on, highway department.
Excuse me. So the highway department has been out doing their normal work with the brush clearance and debris removal. Over the last month or so, there have been some special activities with some of the work that was done on Mulberry Street and some of the other plat, and Livingston, we needed to do some reseating and replanting to stabilize the banks next to the, next to the newly paved areas. So, the highway department's been out doing mulching and reseating. They've had to do some repairs, nominal repairs, on the backhoe, and they've also increased the frequency with which they are emptying the big valleys in the village. We found that, it seems like with the, either increase in foot traffic or whatever's going on, that we've had more garbage accumulating than we have in the last couple of years. So we've added an additional turn through the village to pick up, to empty the valleys.
Thank you.
The water, the plumbing part of the water line project is complete. What they're doing now is they're, they're blocking out the area where the repaving is going to be done, to fill in the trench, and it's going to be like, well, it's broader than that, it's 10 or 11 feet wide.
11 feet.
Yeah, 11 feet wide. And then, one of the change orders we're going to have is to redo mill down an inch and a half in all the intersections. And so, the intersections where Montgomery Street are going to re, meet Livingston, Chestnut and Platt, and then also where the village green area is going to have one and a half inch asphalt. It's going to look nice, actually, in, in all those areas. So it's an intrusive process right now, so be patient, because it's going, it'll be really, really nice really, really soon. So, that's where we are on the waterline project.
So I think that's a three-week project right now, from what they told us, to finish, to finish that.
Yeah, so I, do you have a point?
You just, maybe remember that I need the board to authorize the change work order number five?
Right, I didn't copy that out, but I think we have it on our agenda items.
It does.
Okay.
Those, that, these are the change orders for basically all the stuff that happened on Montgomery Street when we were moving up.
Right, and change work order six will be all the DOT stuff that they have not.
Although I heard, well, I won't say what that, what we think that's going to be. So, there was some service line they had to be worked on at Foster's, and that was 4,800. The Livingston Street Cistern, which was not a tunnel that went all the way to the beak, which we, we were all excited that it was. It turned out it was not. That was 16,800. We had asphalt milling on Chestnut Street, because the subgrade wasn't adequate enough, so that was 12,800. And the insertion valve on East Market Route 9 was 5,900, basically. So the total was about $40,207.45. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve that change order. But that's all been approved by our engineer and the powers that be.
Second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor to accept the change order?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All in favor, so carry. Thank you, Brandon.
So I'm in touch with the people with the landscaping, at the water tank, and all three of the bids I'm trying to retrieve, and I'm, I still haven't gotten any bids in yet. It's going to be prevailing wage, it's not going to be cheap, but it's going to be really nice. So I'm fetching those. We have two bids, one for the diver, to inspect the river intake, there's a bid for 3932, to inspect the reservoir, the water tank, 3997. And the clear well, that's the same thing, I think. So, I'd like to get a motion to accept the Seaway Diving and Salvage Company bid, 3932 for the river intake, 3997 for the water tank inspection, and the clear well is 3997.
That's the same, I thought it was the same.
Yeah, right? It's the same thing, right? Yeah, it's the same thing, okay. Yep. This is something that's mandated by the Department of Health. We've, they want us to do this every three to five years, and it's been five years. So we need to get it done. And this is irrespective of the ladder. We know that the ladder inside the water reservoirs needs to be fixed, but they, these guys aren't the ones that do that, from what I understand.
Have a second?
Second.
Second. So the discussion, I just want to make comment that it was the, our reservoir tank was inspected three years ago, so.
I think it was five years ago, according to Brian.
Have to pull up the video.
Yeah.
All right, what I.
Because, remember, we were, I'm not sure I was here.
Right.
Because I remember the issue of the broken ladder, but I don't know if I was here for that inspection.
No, we can check. But anyways, it's still within, I just want to make a notion that I think we're, it's a good news thing, that we're on schedule to keep doing this.
Three to five years.
Because it had lapsed before.
Yeah.
And we had done it. So I'm not saying, don't do it, I'm saying, this is a good thing, because we're staying on top of inspecting that water tank. And then, the good part is, we have a record of when it was done last time compared to this time as well.
Mm-hmm.
Because we have that video. Okay. All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
The only thing, discussion? It's a specialty, I, we, if we tried to get three bids from frog men, frog people, it would take us another year and a half, so that's the reason why we have one bid.
All right, opposed? Abstained? Unanimous motion carried. Thank you.
Now, the Trident unit is the, it's a supplemental filtration, when, for when we're really at big capacity and everything, there's two clear wells that are next to the filtration things. I don't know exactly how to describe this, but one of them is down, and it's like a grate, it almost looks like a, an aluminum grate with a, with a filtration mat underneath it. It needs to be replaced. So I've given you, and this is also like, a product, a kind of a hard-to-find product. I have a bid from Westec for $4,354 for the grate and the filtration screen underneath it. I also included a bid from them for $4,475 to install it, but we, the guys can do it themselves. So I put that in there just to show you that the guys will save money by installing it, installing it themselves, 4475. So, this is something that needs to be done, the, the clear well is down right now, the Trident unit clear well, and we need to do the grate and the filtration thing underneath it to fix the clear well, $4,354.
Okay, I'd make a motion.
Make a motion to approve that.
Second. Any discussion? And to work on it for the water plant?
I think the staff can do it, that's terrific.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Oh, Brian wanted to, sorry. He wanted to rebuild it himself. I said, no, you guys shouldn't, you guys shouldn't do that. Well, you can install it, but we'll, we'll order this thing, and then you can.
Do you mind to cover the, the?
Well, you can do that. Well, you can do that.
You sure?
Yeah, because you, you know more about that.
All right. Motion carried.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Now we're getting on, we'll go on to the committee reports. I'm just going to summarize some of these because they're all online.
Well, he didn't do wastewater yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Waste water.
Now, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I read the numbers off the top real fast. For the month of June, wastewater treated 3.5 million gallons, gallons of sludge processed 26,000 gallons, and pounds of sludge processed 2.9, I'm sorry, 2,981 pounds. We, we have been talking, Brent and I have been working with Delaware engineers on a study, as I think the board is certainly very familiar and aware. It was supposed to finish up actually sometime in the end of March, I think. Obviously, the pandemic has impacted that along with everything else in life. We needed to submit paperwork to the county requesting an extension. And we, we have until this Friday. We have it completely completed. We have it all ready. And I emailed it to Gary, just to, to the major just this evening, this, before the meeting. Take a look at it, but you'd be very comfortable signing, we're sure, Gary. And as long as we get it to Chris at the county by Friday.
Okay.
And then we have the extension, actually, all the way, I don't know if I told you this, but the extension is all the way out to, I think, October of 2021. And we built in line of extra time.
Okay.
Because how can we predict?
And they're really gathering a lot of information.
No, no, it's just being very productive.
Tomorrow morning, they're going to do a leak test on the transmission line.
Okay.
So I'm going to try to check that out.
Be great.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for missing you. Okay. Committee reports. I'm going to summarize the climate, Smart Committee Report. Just briefly, I would like to note that, I didn't bring it up with me, but right when the pandemic started and the state shut down was the day we were supposed to go get our plaque, right, from the DEC. And we have now received them. We received two plaques. That one is going to go on to our building somewhere here that recognizes the Village of Rhinebeck as being certified as bronze level. And the second one, we're looking at putting out at the entrance coming into the, from the north side of town, a pole out there to recognize it if people can see it coming in. Because they're quite, they're quite large.
Yeah.
And I apologize for not bringing it up here to show you, but they're down in the office if anybody, if anybody wants to see those. The board approved last month putting new labels on the big bellies. That is, those labels have arrived and they'll be going up shortly. And in addition, the work continues as with the Climate Smart Committee. They've met with the Climate Resiliency Planning Tool, which is a collaborative venture with Cornell. So that's all work that's going to work towards hopefully someday getting us to our next level of silver, which is a long ways away. It's not easy to get to silver, so it's going to take us a while. But these are all major projects that we can work on in that, during that time. And the, actually, the Cappy Greenhouse Project, which has also been discussed here, is going to continue as well. It's kind of been delayed due to COVID for start time, but there's still plenty of time for us to, to work on that. And lastly, they're working with Karen on a procurement, a environmentally preferable procurement policy, right, to work on. So that initiative is going on with our, with our treasurer. And that last month's meeting, you heard that we had accepted the intern, David Chernak, to work at reviewing. He's off and running. September will be our halfway point. And at September meeting, we'll invite David in to give us a summary of where we are with, with that, with that project. Okay? Overall, things are still continuing very well. So that's, that's really it for the Climate Smart Committee. Any questions? Move on to the autisms of Board of Committees. It's kind of been a busy month. This is, if you remember, a little over a year ago, we, we started the Autism Awareness Supportive Committee in the Village of Rhinebeck. And we got 60% of our establishments certified in autism training and actually to participate in the awareness of people on the spectrum to provide special needs. We went into a little bit of a lapse for two reasons. Number one, we had exhausted our initial funding for that Phase One project, and we needed to raise money for Phase Two. Phase Two required, and we estimated and put together a plan that said we needed $20,000. And we have obtained that goal of achieving our $20,000 to be able to start Phase Two. That goal was achieved. And we got a letter from the Anderson, Anderson Center that Thompson Trust has awarded as the matching grant of the $10,000 to the $10,000 that we have raised as a committee to go forward to that. So we have the funding to move forward. We were kind of a little bit of a hiatus during the, during this COVID period, but I'd like to say that it's time to start. There's no time like the present to really lead off and do something for those with disabilities like what we're having now. We recognize the difficulties, but those all with disabilities have even more difficulties. So what we're trying to do is get this, get this program started again, get the band back together with the committee, and start working on our Phase Two goals, which I included in here. So with that, we, if you remember last fall, our chair had resigned due to pending issues that they, that she had. And I was taking over as the acting chair for that. And while we were working through this period, I had been consulting with the committee and working with the committee and needed and requested that we find a chair. And actually, a volunteer came forward, and that is our retired superintendent, Joe Phelan, has retired. And I waited till the day after he retired to give him a call to see if he was done with this gig now of retirement and was ready to get back to work. And he happily accepted. And he has been accepted by the committee to now act as our chair for Autism, our Autism Supportive Committee to start leading us through the Phase Two goals. So with that, I would like to get the board's approval to appoint Joe Phelan to the chair of the Autism Supportive Committee. So move that. Any discussion?
Great choice.
Wonderful. Excellent.
Okay. All in favor of accepting Joe Phelan as the chair for Autism Supportive Committee?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Very good. I'll be in touch with Joe. He's, we had a meeting with him today. He's anxious to get started on working on our Phase Two goals. So thank you, Joe Phelan.
Tree Commission. Tree Commission. The Tree Commission received three applications for pruning and removals, to which we have, third one I have in front of me. One from Sarah Burke, one from the Third Lutheran Church, the other from Isabella Schulte to remove a dangerous limb. The committee, excuse me, the commission members have reviewed all the trees involved and do recommend that the removals and pruning take place. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendations of the Tree Commission to approve the application of Sarah Burke, the Third Lutheran Church, and Isabella Schulte.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Any discussion? Has anybody, I've gone out and looked at the trees. Has anybody had an opportunity? I assume you have.
Yeah. I didn't see this one, these.
All right. So just to everybody, they're opposite of each other on the street, right over here on the other side on Livingston Street. The trees on the church side and then trees on Sarah Burke's side. So they are the Norway maples. They were all tagged originally by Central Hudson to come down. When Central Hudson did their last round, I believe they were all tagged, right? Or was it just the church ones?
Not sure. I know certainly the church ones are.
Certainly the church ones I know are. So.
I think one thing I would say, one thing that did make the committee a little bit more, feel like it's more acceptable, is that there are already trees planted at the church, which will be fill-in trees. And I think that's one of the things we probably would like to start looking at as well, that simply instead of pointing down a tree and adding a tree, we hopefully can get a little bit ahead of the curve and put in a replacement a year or two before we actually have to, before a tree comes out. And that way it's a little bit more continuity. I mean, not, we're not there yet, but it is certainly something that people are thinking about. And having, again, having those trees in place makes the loss of some of the trees at least acceptable.
Rick, would the tree inventory software that the village now has lend some support to that?
Yes, yes. And as a matter of fact.
Good plan.
Yeah, we've been, as a matter of fact, I had a meeting with Meg and Martina, and we're starting to work through our workflow for using the software really to its, to its highest, highest capability. So that's, yeah, that's, that's what I'm, we were going to get started in the late fall, you know, listening to late, late winter, but we all kind of got derailed by the, by COVID. So, yeah, we are, we are looking to do that using that software, both for tracking applications that they come in, the work that's done, and then identifying where we want to go and what needs to be done. The village, I'll just say this parenthetically, the village does not have any kind of long-term or regular maintenance plan. And in the discussions with Dave, with the DB, the DB group, not the tree company, different, different group, that's something we should probably consider, but we've just started those, 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 those discussions and thinking about how we do that kind of thing. If there might be grant money in the future, we don't know. But hopefully that would allow us to get ahead of both help to maintain the trees that we have, keep them healthy, and also get ahead of the ones that we know are going to be problematic.
Well, we actually have a meeting keyed up to start that discussion already.
Yes, we did.
So, you know, our trees are an asset to the village. They cool, they cool our village down on these hot days, especially, you know, with the blacktop and the pavement. So they add a lot of value. And the maintenance of these trees is important for their longevity as well, so.
I, I, particularly when I walk through the village, I plan my walks for the shadiest streets because there's such a difference between being in the shade of a tree when you're walking on the sidewalk and being out in the exposed sun. But it's just the direct sunlight, the amount of sunlight that impinges on the blacktop and heats up the blacktop. Having a healthy tree canopy is really a terrific asset to the village. So I would like to, like to continue on that, on those roads.
I would recommend that the board go look at the trees as well, just to familiarize yourself with what the Tree Committee is doing. And take the time to just, just look and study the tree.
And the Tree Committee did not.
I didn't see it.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
I didn't see it on the attachment. I wanted to do that, but. When did it go on?
It's in, it's in here.
I didn't see it in the cloud.
It's, it's under the Tree Committee?
Yeah.
Sarah Burke?
Both there.
It's right there.
I didn't see it at like 2:00.
I checked this out, yeah. They've been there since Friday.
Yeah.
Sometimes the stuff doesn't come up. I mean, may, is that, I mean, maybe that's my internet connection?
I don't know.
I definitely, definitely saw them.
Was there a committee report this month?
No, they, we, they have not met. So the, so the commission, the commission has not met. We're actually going to have a meeting tomorrow, first meeting we've got in a long time tomorrow. We didn't do a planting in the, in the spring because of the COVID situation, but we are trying to map out how to do a fall planting in November. Basically, using groups of people who are, it's acceptable for them to be together if the family units or something come together, plant a couple of trees. And so we can do an appropriate, at least safe, planting. But it is, Meg does feel it's important to keep the momentum going, and we try to replant every, you know, on, on, on cycle.
I think it might be a problem, well, you know, I talked about this with the URLs, because we did change the link for the cloud.
Yes.
And I, I went to the public one, and so maybe that, that was point the course. We'll, we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
They're on the public forms on Friday, though.
Yeah, I, I didn't see it. But thank you.
Okay. All right. But now you know, just still take a look at them, please, just so you're familiar.
Sometimes I don't.
All right. Okay.
I need a vote, I think.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes. Give it a reminder. All right, we have, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of removing the trees specified by the Tree Commission?
Aye.
And approving?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, other business. Paul, I'm going to turn this over to you. You actually brought the subject up about village-owned parcels.
Yes. So really, I guess it came to mind on two occasions. Longer ago, I realized where some trees that were on village-owned property fell on a neighbor's yard and actually impinged on a neighbor's yard. This was about a year ago, and it sort of stuck in my head. But recently, because of COVID and perhaps the financial stress that, you know, all of us are feeling, especially the village, I thought it might be worthwhile looking into just how many village-owned properties there are. Of course, village-owned properties pay no taxes, but the reminder was that in certain cases, there may be some liabilities. So I asked the building inspector to please look at Dutchess County Parcel and do a little research for us. And what we came up with is that there are 10 parcels that are owned by the village. Again, this is, you know, somewhat preliminary, but we think that it's accurate. Of those 10, three are either reserved for infrastructure or designated open spaces. Seven, which have a total acreage, combined acreage of all seven, about two and a half acres, combined fair market value is about $510,000, according to Dutchess County Parcel. And the question is whether or not we should consider putting these parcels up for auction and try and bring them back onto the tax roll. And so this is a preliminary step to bring it to the board's attention and hopefully have some discussion about the topic. And if the board agrees, the next step would be to check with our attorney and get some ideas, how this would be approached, would be the most equitable way to handle disposal of these parcels.
I've been around a long time, and I kind of, I know where most of them have come from. Looks like three of them are retention ponds.
Right, yeah.
Ex subdivisions.
Yeah.
And then one of them was the lift station over at the hospital, that little 30 by 30 piece.
Yeah, yeah.
So there, one of them is a storm drain. It's not an easement. It's actually, I guess we own it in fee simple. But, I mean, we probably wouldn't want to sell that. I mean, we could sell it to the adjacent landowner and retain the, you know, an easement for the, for the storm.
I think those three or four were sort of off the table.
Oh, okay.
It was really ones that I haven't looked at every parcel and visited. But those, according to the building inspector, those seven seem to be likely candidates. We'd have to do a little more checking on that. But it's really about, okay, do we want to consider it? And do we want to take the next step of exploring what that process would actually be? And possibly even, you know, taking a look at, okay, is it really worth the effort? One of the parcels, for example, has a fair market value of $280,000. Another has a fair market value of $127,000. So, you know, there's some big numbers on the page. The question is, okay, would we realize that kind of revenue? And if we sold them even at some other number, you know, what sort of regular tax revenue would that bring? And liability, if any, would that exonerate us from?
I, I know probably some of these lost those sands of time. How we came to.
Well, that's a different, that's a.
Right, right, you know, right. I'm sure, hard enough. I, I know the one on Bird Court certainly looks like it's a building lot.
Yeah.
It is, but I bet that's a retention, because that's the seven-lot subdivision that behind Bob Fennell's house. So it's probably there for water retention.
There's not a retention pond on it, though. There's not a retention pond on it, though.
But maybe that's what it's reserved for, I don't know.
It's like, it looks like it has a.
Because I remember, we bought the two in Scortiniville. We bought the two retention ponds.
The village did?
Yeah.
I mean, we'd obviously have to do some more research as to whether or not those seven would be possibilities, but, you know, it's a substantial sum of money.
Yeah.
You know, even if we realize half of that and then to put it on the tax rules, I think that might benefit the village.
The one I didn't, the one where it goes to Rockefeller, when you cut up from Route 9, that piece, it was a fragment piece that was just north of there. I didn't, I had no idea. That's the one that surprised me. I didn't know we owned that.
It's actually, it's the parcel I'm familiar with, there's actually a little split rail fence along it, and there's a pool in there that we use often to get down into the access to the water valves and stuff.
Okay. I didn't think it was right next to the Leesum Park, but, or is that?
It's on the other side.
It's on the other side, yeah, so that's.
It's on the other side of the stream.
Right.
And just for clarification, the parking lot behind Arroy is a municipal parking lot as well.
That's the lower parking.
That's the lower parking lot, we have that as well.
We do.
Right.
That's part of the municipal lot.
Yeah.
So maybe it's not all of them, but maybe, you know, the board should review and.
Couple of them.
And look at one or two, and maybe pick out two prime lots that maybe at this time of where we're at, you know, to look at and say, let's not figure, let's not try to get them all, but let's go for one or let's pick out two of the, partly the best alternative, the best ones to use, right?
With the board's approval, I would suggest that, you know, we refine this list, check it out carefully, you know, to make sure that, and come back with some assessment of, let's say, their saleability in terms of, A, would we, you know, likely want to sell these? And then a second step as preparation for some further discussion, is we talk with our attorney and just say, okay, what will we need to do, what would be the process for this? And would we engage, let's say, you know, an independent evaluation? How will we just go about this process?
There is a process, yeah. It's already a very defined process.
A very defined process.
I would only ask that we make certain that we keep engagement of our residents involved.
Oh, yeah.
But not inside the fact that parcels of the village belong to not any of us here, but to the people.
No.
So we need to make sure that they're properly engaged as well.
Yeah. I think I agree, and if, with the board's permission, I'd be happy to follow up on those couple of steps. A being confirming that these are the only properties and, you know, getting some more information as to appropriateness, like, okay, what's the description and so forth. And then the second step, exploring what that actual process would be as a preliminary step of, you know, getting the public involved.
Good, Paul, thank you.
So, I guess with the board's approval, I would like to make most ask Paul to come back to the next meeting with the identification of.
What do you get?
One or two meetings, one or two of those prominent ones, and present, and so that we can have a discussion.
Okay.
All right, do I have a second for that?
Do you need a question?
I think so, just because we're looking at selling property, I want to make it official.
Okay. I'll second.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried, yes. In dealing with that, I'd like to. Okay, Paul, I'm going to actually keep you on roll here because you and I have had discussions about the village entrances and the landscape, and the landscaping.
So first of all, we start off by saying that, you know, I think the volunteers that actually repopulated the southerly greenscape where the sign is with actually the plants that were moved as part of the water project and the road rehabilitation were, you know, really did a good job. I think it's great that there was volunteers. But it's, you know, appeared to everyone, myself included, that there's this other space there where there are no plantings, there were no additional plantings for that. And I want to bring it up and to the attention of the board that it might be appropriate to actually landscape the remaining portion of that island. I think it's about 850 square feet or so, adjacent to the sign. Our new sign is there. Right now, it's just topsoil with no plantings, and there are some plantings behind the sign. And I was, secondly, going to suggest that we perhaps get the community involved in one way, shape, or form, perhaps to make it a joint effort of, you know, more volunteers, either to, you know, let's say, design the landscape or possibly even contribute plants once a landscape design that would be appropriate, that is something that is appropriate to the environment, was proposed. And I was asking for the board's permission to explore this further, see if you liked the idea, and see if we could move forward on that to, let's say, plan by the fall to have something planted there for the village as an entrance to the village itself.
The only thing I would like to add to that, Paul, is that I'd like to expand it to all three, not just the one from the north side.
Right, right, yes.
Right, but if you, the one coming up from the south is also in, the pictures are here, you can look at the pictures.
Yes.
Right? I think it's self-explanatory that coming into the village, we now have a reasonable sign that's not torn down or dilapidated or falling apart, but yet the landscaping around it is really not being maintained. And so I would like to expand that to all three.
Yes, absolutely, sorry.
The one on the east and the one on the south probably don't have any irrigation. There's a tap, the one on the north might have.
But maybe it's a different type of planting, then.
Yes, you'd want hardier things, more drought-resistant stuff.
Yeah.
Which is great, I mean, you know, coneflowers or whatever.
So the Thompson Mazarelle Park Committee has been working with some graduate students to do some level of plant, we'll call it landscape design for Thompson Mazarelle Park. And I believe that these people are doing it, it's like graduate student work for them.
That's a pollinator.
The pollinator side. And I'm wondering if we can just involve them, we might be able to get some landscape, some design, some suggestions from that group.
It's the Conway School.
Yeah.
So the idea is to get this done for, on a bond, at no cost to us except for the plants and stuff, right?
Well, I think Paul's suggestion is that we involve the community into somehow coming up with, A, conceptual design, and maybe, we have our engineering firm here that I think could help us with this, I believe. Is that true, Brandy?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so.
For free.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, that's what I was getting at.
I would actually, I would actually like to push, actually make the request to that we have our engineering firm come up with some sort of specifications that we can roll out with rather than not going out with something. And I would like to make that a task item, if approved by the board, for our engineering firm to come back with the recommendations, and then that we can work with the community to further evaluate that and maybe get engagement with the community.
The nature of the recommendation from the engineering firm would be?
That's what I was going to ask too.
So, I'm talking.
Like species area, mowing, clear heights.
Yeah, kind of like, what is acceptable, right? Because we may get a design, we may love that design, but as Grant mentioned, it may not be drought-resistant where we don't have adequate maintenance for it, so.
And you don't want any trucks that are going to overwhelm it in 10 years.
Would the tree committee not have the talent there to do this as well?
The tree committee hasn't generally done landscaping, but I think what I would do is I would try to engage the Conway School to see if they would come in, because these are the kinds of things I think about.
Yeah, I'd rather not.
Appropriate, appropriate stuff. I think one of the issues, as I know, talking to Meg about this, is that there's been a very tight core of volunteers who've done a lot of work for the village over the years. And it's important that we expand out a little bit. Meg, who's also the chairwoman of the tree commission, does a lot of the, she needs some other volunteers.
She runs this little volunteer group who did all the plantings that we have out there on the north side. They went out and they dug them all up before we did the water.
Yeah.
Right, and then we stored them at the highway garage. She kept them watered every day until they were transplanted back, and then her and her volunteers went back and transplanted everything. It was a wonderful effort.
It's a huge, it's a huge.
A lot of work, but it's a bigger area. And what Paul's talking about, not that area specific, but the area that is on the north side, which is proceeding at, which was grass before.
So, I just need a little clarity. So, that's why I asked, I mean, would you, or were you proposing that Time Bond do the landscape design?
No.
Just a spec.
The spec of what's.
Yeah, as a baseline, here's the spec, okay. And then the next step would be to either with volunteers, the Conway Group, whatever, whatever, to come up with, my suggestion is, let's have some volunteers, the community come up with, you know, an acceptable plan, have that vetted out with, let's say, some professional help perhaps.
Or probably take over ownership of that, or something.
And basically, I thought that it might be a great way to have contributions to say, you know, we need 150 plants, this is the, you know, menu of options, okay? And if you want to donate a plant or two or something, and then perhaps Meg and that group, since they were great at planting and curating, you know, might want to participate and install them.
I think they do, but I sort of want to bring them out.
Oh, okay.
They've carried a very heavy, they've been, I mean, they do a terrific job, and I don't want to.
I don't want to volunteer when.
Yeah, and that is, it's a little bit of a concern. They do, they do all getting boos through the spring and the fall plantings done is really a big job. I don't know, people are even, they're even talking about trying to expand the committee so they'd have more hands. So I'm a little bit, they're doing such a good job, I'm a little bit.
They're overwhelming.
Don't touch it, and it ain't broke.
Right, right.
But anyway, some sort of structure like that that basically takes us through some stages.
So are you okay with starting with a spec?
Oh, yes. Okay, no, I just want to be clear.
I have a concern about that. I just think that we should pursue maybe the graduate students.
Yeah, I think we do.
To lay it off.
Sorry.
I mean, I think we kind of expect the folks to work for free, and I think.
Honestly, I mean, if you guys need a planting spec, we have, I have that, and I'd be happy to make that available as far as soil preparation, that sort of thing, encourage the local area, if that is something, we can certainly provide for the village. That's no effort on my part to give that to you guys, so, you know, whatever's fine with us.
All right, so the first step is you're going to.
I'll return the parcel.
Okay, very good.
So I make a motion that we pursue first step with trustee, pretty good, to explore the possibility of, what, initial landscape structure, let's say, design.
Note itself right here.
Okay. I second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Very good. All right, next on agenda is village approval of the minutes from our last board meeting on 6/9/2020. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as written by our village clerk.
Second.
Second. Discussion.
I think you got, my, two changes, right?
I did, I fixed mine.
And the bear's.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Carried, thank you. Okay, next on agenda is, what we'd like to do is, we'd like to recognize our village employees who have anniversaries in the past month. And I don't know how we can often reach out and thank people who really work hard for the village. And so I'd like to extend congratulations for the July anniversaries to Officer Kyle Jennings for five years, Police Clerk Daniel Rector, 11 years, Officer Ken Landers, 18 years, Officer Ken Scattergood, 22 years, and Officer Dan Kalin, 25 years. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you, thank you, thank you for your service to the village. All right, next on the agenda is a vacation buyout for employee number six. And this is a request to buy out 56 hours of accumulated vacation. I don't know if anybody has a copy of that, I'll circulate that around. I believe there's plenty of hours, correct? Last time I checked, this employee has the appropriate hours to do the buyout. Yep. Okay, any, I make a motion that we approve this employee for 56 hours of their accumulated vacation leave and buyout. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Okay, special requests. We get to that. We have two special requests, both are from the chamber. Going back too far, hang on. The first one is a community ribbon cutting, excuse me, ribbon cutting event, again, offered by the Reinbeck Chamber, and is to do a ribbon cutting on Route 9 at the intersection of East and West Marcus Street at the intersection to celebrate the reopening of our community as going into phase four. There will be a few words by the chamber, you know, some press, some press will be there, and the total length of time is to be expected by 15 minutes, right? To be able to do that, and then the street, we would have to have the police section off the street for us for approximately five minutes to do the ribbon cutting, and then the actual discussion would be held over onto the side, out of the way of traffic. And the time of this is either July 24th, July 31st, or August 7th. Some of those are rain dates, and some of them are just lining up the appropriate people to be done. So it'll be a socially distanced event in terms of people being participant. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the event application at a Reinbeck Area Chamber of Commerce for a ribbon cutting event at the intersection of Route 9 and East and West Marcus Street.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Very good, thank you. Next one, music on Market Street. Again, this is being, this is being brought in as an event by the chamber. What they were, what the chamber is looking to do is to basically have live music in the village. It's a small, offered by a small ensemble, two to three-piece ensemble with soft mellow music for village strollers and visitors as a shop and dine in the village. It's a non-seated event, it's not where people are going to come and sit. I mean, there may be a couple of people sitting at chairs or convenient places where they want to hold it, but it's designed not to gather people, because that's something we want to avoid, and that's something I spoke to the chamber that we need to avoid, is having a gathering, right, of people. So it'll just be music that will be played. Their goal was to do it, you know, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on the 24th to 31st to 7th to 14th to 21st and the 28th on our village sidewalks on East Marcus Street.
It's Friday afternoon?
Pardon?
Friday afternoon?
Friday afternoon, they're all Fridays, yes.
I make a motion to accept the application.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept the Reinbeck Chamber of Commerce, live music in village.
Second that.
I'm second.
Just making sure that it's, you know, sonically acceptable, that they're not too loud.
Yeah, that's why it's very specifically worded, has to be, this is meant to be like a guitar player or a cello player or, you know, something along those lines that are, right?
Is it going to be?
Within the soft, mellow environment, right? It needs to be.
So it's going to be a different group each occasion? Or the same group each occasion?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
So there are several occasions?
There, I gave you dates, 24th to 31st to 7th to 14th to 21st.
The question is whether or not the plan is to have the same group.
Oh, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know who they have in mind or what kind of group they have, but it's meant to draw, start drawing, trying to draw people back into the village.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
That's what it's for. It's not meant to, anything but to create, again, some more of the vibe to bring people.
Ambiance.
Yeah, what?
Ambiance.
Ambiance. Where are they going to be positioned? I'm sorry, I didn't look at the application. Are they going to be stationed?
It's going to be various places throughout the sidewalk. Wherever there's convenient space to be able to set up, the storefront allows them to set up, right? So it's not intruding on any of the business and or blocking the sidewalks. You know, it may be in one of the sectioned-off areas inside the barricades that we have. So it's out into the, out into the street and not on the sidewalk. You know, there's plenty of places right now for them.
I think it's a great idea. My only concern was that how would we want to communicate that, okay, you know, keep walking, listen as you go by type of situation as opposed to standing?
I discussed that with the chamber, and that's a very good question. The chamber will have somebody there to, I mean, unless there's somebody sitting in a chair, socially distant, then there's a chair available, but it's not to bring chairs in gathering, they're not going to allow that, so.
Okay, as long as that.
They'll be monitoring that.
Okay, great.
Good question. Yeah.
So I have a concern about, I mean, it's a close call for me, but I have a concern about sanctioning, you know, live street music, because I just think it's a slippery slope, like, I just think that more people are going to want to do it, and if they did it, then how come I can't do it? It's just too many dates and too much time, so I just, as it's submitted, I'm just not going to approve it.
Are you concerned about busters, or are you concerned about? Are you, are you concerned about busters, or are you concerned about?
We don't have a buster law.
Well, I know.
Right.
Like, I don't, I'm concerned about sanctioning it, because I just think it can lead to other, other people doing the same thing.
And in one way, though, this, this, this is such an example that people have to get it approved, too.
It's too many weeks, if it, we, we approved those fiddler, the, the fiddlers at the farmer's market once, right, but I don't think they were, they played seven weeks, or six weeks, or five weeks for, for hours, like, like I said, it's a close call, but.
You know, I, I actually think it's, it's an okay idea, I understand, you know, your concern, but I don't think there's any, you know, taking an action on one, it doesn't necessarily mean a precedent, I don't, I don't think so.
It's, in my experience, it's
Yeah, it's old tough, but
And plus, I've worked on that zoning code and, you know, for three years, and we, we went over the noise ordinance and live music and outside live music and all this.
Is the chamber proposing this, you know, I, I guess I see it as an action that will help promote business, given the circumstances, the exceptional circumstances of COVID, where we've actually allowed folks out onto the street, and maybe if, you know, we cover it with that umbrella, that this is, in essence, a kind of experiment and association with that, where we've let this spilling out onto the street, I think, you know, my feeling
That was an assumption I made, I mean, yeah, we, normally we wouldn't do this at all, I would hope.
Under normal times, we would not allow it.
Yeah, so it's not normal times, is my point, and
But you're right, you should express it then, if you're gonna approve this, I think that's a good idea.
I mean, I think that's okay, as long as we put it in, then we could consider how it works and, you know, refine the process maybe in the future.
All right, so let's amend it and say that, you know, this is a temporary
Yeah.
Allow us during the time period when we have the village set up the way we do, and it's only allowed while we have that relaxation of the zoning code that prohibits it, right? So.
Is that okay? I think I'm
I'd rather see three or four weeks, or two weeks, all right, I'll go along with it.
And maybe it won't be, it depends, I don't know if they're even gonna, these are proposed dates, they don't have people lined up for these dates, and so, it could be
Rains.
It could be, it could be rain, right, I don't know.
One, one thing you're, you're reaching me on, or this is something that I'm pointing out, is that, that dining outdoors is becoming a public health issue, because we know that air is not circulating, or the way air circulates indoors is not as safe as dining outside, so I'm
Outdoors is better than indoors.
Outdoors is better, so I am attracted to that part of it.
Yeah.
I agree.
Clearly.
Clearly.
Because it's becoming a health issue, and now we have the two-lane traffic, which last month, you know, the thing that I didn't like was the one-way, but now, you know, what the way it's set up now, I'm, I'm not so dead-set against it, it's
Worked out.
But we, it wasn't presented to us.
Well, that was the proposal that was available at the time, and so it changed.
Good, it changed really better.
It did, it did.
Okay.
Right?
Yes, no question.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried, all right. Martina, will you make sure you get in touch with Carolyn and tell her that both these are approved? Okay, and correspondence is on file, and unless there's anything else, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our July 14th meeting at eight thirty-five.
The only thing, there was one correspondence about the mask-wearing and the enforcement of it, and I'm the kind of, don't know, like, how that's being conducted, so it sort of made me wonder if you could sort of let us know, as far as the mask-wearing rules, particularly in the outdoor dining area.
So, interesting enough, I mean, you know, our, our job is to enforce the executive orders, and the executive orders by the governor is that unless you are, cannot control social distancing with the six-foot spacing like we have here, you need to wear a mask, all right? So, the issue with that is there is no enforcement with that, right? The governor had proposed that if it wasn't abided by, he would impose civil fines and so whatever, but he has not done that, he has left it up to the enforcement to be done as the police, because their job is to enforce the executive orders, so if there's a complaint, the police respond, if the patron or whatever doesn't do it, and they kindly have to ask them to either put a mask on or to maintain social distance, maintain social distancing. It's a, it's, it's an ongoing issue, and it's an ongoing struggle, I think everybody knows my position, that even in the village hall here, if you can't maintain social distancing, if you're in a common area, or you're in somebody else's office, you must wear your mask, right? So, and the same is true for outside. The governor has put the illness on the establishments, that if there's a complaint, the complaint goes back to the establishment, and then the establishment could be punitively punished for not wearing their mask, for not enforcing the mask rule. I don't, I don't know what else to say about it, Grant, but I would encourage everybody to wear a mask.
Are, are police buried in these issues? I mean, are they really, this is taking up a lot of their time.
No.
Our village police.
No, they're not, so only when there's a complaint do they respond, they're not, they are not actively patrolling unless they're out there and there's an issue, then they would do it, but they're not making time dedicated to this.
Have we got a tally of
Although I would, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
I would like to have them do more, especially in our areas on East Market Street, where the sidewalk is intermixed with, with diners, right, and there's often the complaints that we get, and I'll say this publicly, the complaints that we get are from people not wearing masks inside, you know, a, a non-socially-distanced space, and we do get that.
Okay, that was my question, have we, you know, got a tally of just the sort of
I don't have, I don't have a tally. I do know we get them, we had one this weekend as well.
So, my, my understanding is that at least within a business, if business can require that people wear masks inside, and if a person does not comply, the employees, the owners can ask that person to leave, and if the person doesn't comply, at that point, they're trespassing, and that, and then, and then, and then the police are summoned, basically to reinforce the trespassing complaint.
If they want to issue
If, if they want, if they want, if they want to go that far, that, that's the
The owner has to issue, has to make that decision.
Right, 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 so that's
It's a tough, it's very tough right now, it's tough on our police, it's tough on the public to understand these, I've been trying to put out as much information as I can about it on our postings, that we encourage everybody to wear a mask, because we are demonstrating here.
Right, so, you know, when you have social distance, you don't have to wear a mask, but certainly if social distance is gonna be violated, or at least cut down.
Or if you're a family unit, right, but if that family unit meets up with another unit, then they, they need to wear a mask, right? Does that help?
Yeah, I mean, it's a new thing, you know, this outdoor dining, so, in particular.
All right, and we do have signs throughout the village, asking people to
Yeah.
Wear a mask, and that has been reviewed by our lawyer to make sure that they're appropriate, and he's given the approval for those, those signs as well.
Okay.
Okay? All right, again, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn now at eight forty, do I have a second?
Yes, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried, thank you.